Good evening to everyone. I'm on the Mount Vernon Council meeting, September 17th. I'm on the Vernon Council meeting to order. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda we have in front of us.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Next item, Communications. Does anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number of items here, so bear with. Approval of council minutes, September 4th, 2018. Approval of liquor license for Big Barbecue Group of. Appoint Marianne Taylor for the Mount Vernon Polit Laureate. Appoint Trudy Elliott and Jay Williams, Planning and Zoning Commission. Appoint Ed Sauter and Lauren Conley, Board of Appeals. Appoint Dean Borg and Noah Meyer, Board of Appeals, alternates. Appoint Lauren Conley and Jill Wolfe, Assistant Building Officials. Appoint Suzette Astley, Ed Sauter, Robert Murphy, Susan Harkes, Guy Booth. Ms. Janet Budick has asked not to be reappointed, so make note of that. And then appoint Roy Weevil, Catherine Parduska, and Lauren Hoffman to the Parts and Recreation Board.
Do I have a different?
You have the Pizza Palace.
Yeah, number three.
The one thing I want to caution you that we figured out today is that the Word document agenda that was sent to you differs from the PDF version, so you want to pull the PDF version up. Apparently, when I attached the Word document, it attached the older version.
This is a PDF one.
So the PDF should have.
Approval of liquor license.
Pizza Palace.
Pizza Palace.
Liquor license.
And approval of record license for the Mount Vernon Pizza Palace as well.
I would move an approval event to consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Motion carries. Thanks to all those individuals who are willing to donate their time, efforts, and energy to all those boards and commissions. All right, next item is the public hearing. Public hearing for the consideration of ordinance, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa, repealing Chapter 165 zoning regulations and zoning map, and adopting a new Chapter 165 zoning regulations and zoning map, and move thereof. I'll open up public hearing for anybody that would like to address this matter. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Proceed to F1, Ordinance 917-2018A, repealing Chapter 165 zoning regulations and zoning map, and adopting a new Chapter 165 zoning regulations and zoning map, and move thereof. Chris?
Counsel, so Planning and Zoning Commission did actually go page by page, just entire documents to make changes. Probably the more significant thing that's nodding here is the switch, the potential for retail sales outside of the downtown. And I think consensus has been let that process with the bypass move forward and talk about retail sales versus making significant changes to the zoning ordinance. We did make changes and modifications to accessory buildings. There are limits now to the size of accessory buildings. We had some that were obviously pushing the envelope. Two or three of them actually were much bigger than the houses with the, they were supposed to be an accessory, too. Furbish changes, additions like urban farming. Other than that, Chad's in the audience as well, if you have any specific questions to him, but I would actually foresee more significant changes coming to the subdivision code than I would the actual selling. Zoning was updating. Matt had made notes. We actually made notes over the past year and a half of things that had come up that we wanted them to review, so Chad, if you want to talk specifically or anything.
No, I think that was right. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission, as far as the retail in the bypass area, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission felt it was important to wait until your corridor plan was completed before making any substantial changes with that regard to the zoning ordinance. I think once that corridor plan is complete, when you have an idea of what and where you want to go out there, then it would be an easy update to the zoning ordinance at that time. But I think Chris covered everything. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if, doesn't look like there's any P&amp;Z members here tonight, but like Chris said, they've spent the better part of the last year and a half or so working on it. All of the changes, of course, are highlighted in your documents, so you know what changes were made. And like Chris said, a lot of it was formatting, that kind of thing, getting rid of the inconsistencies with the old code and making it sort of easier to use. A lot of the use in the old code, you had to go from one page to a different section, back to a different section to figure something out, so we wanted to get rid of that and make it easier to use. Be happy to answer any questions.
No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance 9-17-2018A, zoning regulations and zoning park.
No, that's good unless you want to reiterate.
I would, with huge thanks to Planning and Zoning, second that motion.
Comments? Comments, roll call please, Sue.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
Rose.
Yep. Yeah, Scott just mentioned, thank you to everybody involved, I know that was a tremendous effort. All right, next item, public hearing for the preliminary plans and specifications for the Fifth Avenue Northwest and First Street West traffic signal installation project. I will now open the public hearing for anybody that would like to comment. Chris?
Mayor, Council?
As you're aware, this is the traffic, the traffic signal replacement over on Fifth Avenue Northwest, First Street, it's over by Cornell College, and that's the water tower. That's a signal that has lights just on one street currently. We're replacing that with four signal heads, so we have lights on every street, and replacing the sidewalk on the Cornell side, just the access ramps, the brick sidewalk that's across the street will remain in place, but it'll be necessary to replace those ramps for every appliance. This is part of a grant project, so the equipment that comes with this is covered by the state. The installation is our cost, as well as any surface restoration, anything like that, so the estimate's just under $150,000. We're looking at a schedule of putting that on September 27th, awarding contract, first meeting in October, and then we would start construction in June, once school was out, and have that done before school starts again next year. There's a pretty good delay when they order the equipment. It has to be fabricated, it's all custom, so there'll be about eight to 12 week delay just to get that done.
The grant application, about $56,000 for the equipment. Can we move the grant? Do you agree?
Now, this is a four-way stop, right? Because right now, the north-south traffic, so when they push that button, north-south, they assume they can still turn, as long as it's going to be a four-way now.
Fully signalized intersection.
Okay, that'll be nice. That'll be nice to get that confusion.
So once it's, once it is four-way, I would assume, I'm correct if I'm wrong, but Main Street will always be green unless somebody presses the button, or will it be on a timer so that it rotates like a normal?
So we have cameras as part of this, and the primary route will be on First Street, and that'll usually be there unless a car pulls up on the other one, and then it'll recognize that and turn the signal, but there are some presets there so pedestrians can get across. Probably push buttons there, so that if they decide to cross, they'll push, they'll give a countdown, that sort of thing.
But if somebody approaches either going north or south on Fifth, it'll get recognized?
Yes.
A little bit of a delay and then it'll?
Trigger the cameras, yes. All right. It will be much safer, obviously, for pedestrians, because I agree, I travel that quite frequently, and those going north and south, someone's sit there, and then?
Yeah, you don't know what to do. You don't run into them, so the problem is you don't really know what you're supposed to do, so.
There's a lot of pedestrians at Cornell.
Yeah, this time of year especially.
Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. We'll have a little bit of a class. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I do have, I have a concern about that intersection. When you're coming up from the south on Fifth to First Street, the visibility to the west is virtually nil. If you're driving a sedan car like I do, I think you really need to consider the parking along First Street, west of Fifth Avenue. I know you've stepped it back, but it needs to go back further. And there is that sign that Cornell put there, too, that interferes with your visual to the west. I mean, if you're driving a sedan vehicle, a stupid little Dodge Stratus, you can't see at that corner.
You have to pull out far enough, don't you, to see your own?
Well, if you don't get hit, yeah. Yeah, that's my point. And I've heard other people, even in SUVs, have a problem seeing, so you need to consider how that parking is going to be dealt with at that same intersection.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise, it's great. Thanks, Marty.
Chief, I assume that's something you can, is there anybody else? I don't know, I will close the public hearing. Move on to resolution number one, Resolution 917-2018B, Resolution approving plans and specifications for the Fifth Avenue Northwest and First Street West traffic signal installation project.
I move to approve Resolution 9-17-2018A.
I'll second that. Comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Weasley.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution 917-2018B, Resolution directing the advertisement of sale and approving electronic bidding procedures and official statements.
This is on the $5 million bond issuance. We did not go to 5.5, I'm reserving the half million dollars for if we need it. We would borrow that probably short-term locally, for sure, if we did. The bids will be due at 11:00 a.m. on October 1st, so Sphira will be here for that bid procedure, and then they'll be here for the council meeting that night as well. We have our ratings meeting update with S&amp;P on Wednesday at 10:00. So we're, we were A+. We were upgraded to AA negative, which sounds kind of contrary, but AAA is actually the highest, so AAA, AA, and then sig A, and then beyond that, start going down. D is the lowest that you can get from a rating perspective, so actually AA negative is higher than A+.
Can we say A+? My notes sound better than A+.
So I am hopeful that we would maintain our AA status. However, this does get us within that 20% for a year, so we'll see how that kind of plays out. So there were some economic factors that are better during this rating procedure. Obviously, that gets us a little closer, so hopefully they will pare each other out, we'll be fine. If you have any questions, like I said, it's the $5 million bond issuance to move forward. All of this is kind of coming together at one time, so repayment on these dollars will be $25,000 from sales tax per year, and the remaining coming from TIP. The TIP payment will never, if you look at the repayment schedule, does not exceed what we currently have any relaxing.
Any other questions for Chris? Do you want to entertain a motion?
I would move approval of Resolution number 9-17-2018B, authorizing move forward with the $5 million borrowing process.
I'll second.
Comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
West. Yes. Rose.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution 917-2018C, ordering construction of certain public improvements, approving preliminary plans, improving form of contract and estimated costs, and placing a date for hearing thereon and taking bids therefore for improvements known as the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center Construction Project.
So we are at, have reached a point now where we can move forward on taking the bids for the project. Bids will be due October 30th. Sorry, I'm reading through the project. So October 1st, same as you did tonight with the light projects, you will approve plans, specifications, form of contract, and architects estimate for the project. Once that is complete, then the bids will go out. There will be three, or they've allotted for three addendums, meaning they can make minor modifications to the plans and specifications three times in between October 1st and October 30th. October 30th, once the bids are?
They, the architect or?
The architect, yes.
Okay.
Typically, it comes from questions from the contractor, so it's basically an addendum as a point of clarification.
Yep.
And then you will, so October 1st will be the public hearing, November 5th is when you would be considering the bids. There is potential then for them to actually break down and remember ending contracts. Contracts are actually, form of contracts are being redeemed by our city attorney already, so I expect a fairly smooth process once they get the bids received.
First, remember, do we have a penalty clause for completion date? I'm not sure we, are we against any window for that?
We will. As part of the contract, the completion is currently scheduled to be October, November of 19.
Is that your question?
Uh, no, I mean, I thought it came from.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Do you want to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 9-17-2018C, ordering construction of certain public improvements, or the wellness administration.
Can I second?
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 917-2018D, disposing of city-owned property. Chris, I have a list in front of us.
Yeah, we've got a revised list in front of you. Basically, it's the old SCBA gear from the fire department that we replaced recently. The stuff that can really be reused is going to the city of Tipton. I guess they had bid on it. And then the remaining is going to a recycling company. Most of that equipment is much older. The pitching machine, Matt had indicated today that it's, you know, it's used, and we have a replacement. And then the two vehicles will be replaced with the Ford Explorer that's coming offline as we set our replacement schedule for the PD. So these are two vehicles that have been used in the past for travel. Those will be replaced by a new Ford that we use for travel and inspections.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 9-17-2018D, disposing of municipal property.
Sir? Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
Rose.
Yep.
West.
Yes.
Weasley.
Yes.
All right, next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims lists. Anybody have any questions on the claims list?
I'd move approval of the claims list as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion, consideration of WOFC Waste Services contract extension. Chris?
So I was finally able to sit Dave down, who's the owner of WOFC Waste. His son apparently has waste disposal on Marshalltown, that was the village, so storms have caused him to be over there. So as I put in my memo, he is seeking a 25 percent, or 25 cent increase in residential trash per month, 25 percent increase in LEFAC charges, and a 63 cent increase in commercial loose yard per month. The 63 cent commercial can be taken in our current charges. The LEFAC can be taken in our current charges. He also plans on drastically reducing that, so we're only really talking about this year as far as those charges are concerned. The 25 cent increase in residential cannot. If you remember, the 75, we extended this for a year, and it was a 75 cent increase. At the time, he had requested the dollar. He went 75 cents because we'd only gone for a year. He's basically asking for his dollar. The residential charge has not changed since 2012, so we're talking about a dollar increase. Basically, that will span till 2021 with this three-year extension, so not horrible. And of course, in 2021, we can decide again if we want to relook at the current state of garbage tags or move to potentially something different, so that'll be up to the council at that point again. What I'm proposing, though, because we cannot take a dollar increase in the residential rates with the current rates that we have, is either a 75 cent increase in the residential charge per month, which would take our residential charge from 1050 to 1125, or increasing the amount of the tags by 25 cents. Right now, our current revenues are basically breaking even with what our expenses are. With the increases, we won't break even, so we've got to make some of that revenue back up. As I'm talking to you about tags, I think it's, I've heard of, I do bring up that at least one business owner that buys tags in bulk and resells them has pointed out the fact that he believes that he has to then eat those charges, the credit card charges, because it's in, for him, it's a dollar-for-dollar charge on the tag. He's buying them at $3 and selling them at $3. If, if we look at increasing the tags by 25 cents, we could potentially look at a bulk charge that would be slightly less than the 25 cent increase, so that they could offset some of those charges, if the council wants to look that way.
Bulk as in retailers who commit?
Buy $500 or more at a time or something. We could set, obviously, a limit.
Sure.
I mean, it's only going to affect probably two or three individuals in town, and may only affect one.
But the bulk, we're talking about the, for the retailers, not if I walk into?
Unless you're going to walk in and buy three or 400 of.
We, right, and I don't generate yearly, okay, got you.
It is, I mean, I, I go on both sides of this fence. I do empathize the fact that you could be taking those fees. At the same time, I would say most, most people that travel or go to those aren't specifically going there for, for garbage tags, but.
No, but if, if we, either they do it or we do it.
Correct.
And then, and then we've got staffing hours.
And, you know, we do, we don't charge a fee.
Right.
For credit cards, pay a fee.
Right.
To the company that is basically taking our, our credit card amount, so this doesn't have to be decided tonight. It's not as if we're going to work the bank way doing this, but I did want to point out that by extending this initial contract by three years, we will have to make some change, whether or not, like I said, it's to the minimum basic fee or to the tag themselves.
I personally don't like the idea of raising the tags.
And the, the minimum basic charge will cover that cost? Here's my other side of that argument, though, because given, so the, part of the thinking behind not going the direction Lisbon has, and going with the bigger, just bulk recycling or garbage, and everybody pays extra, every household, the theory was, or the idea is that the more if you, the more you throw away, the more you pay, right? So people like my parents, who recycle everything they can find and do complex ninja, and they do like a garbage bag every two weeks, and it's absurd. Yeah, and so, and I don't like the idea of raising the tag fee, but if that is the thinking behind sticking with tags, then, then that's the direction I would go to continue that line.
Yeah, and I think what's great about this is, you know, if the council counter, I can move forward with the three-year extension to WOFC Waste. I mean, if, it's either that or we start the RFP process again and go down the road that we just had a discussion on, so we can move forward with that. Again, we have, we can honestly take those charges for the next two or three months and still be okay, but we'll just have to make some concession as we talk about the budget this year. And by having this discussion tonight, we give the opportunity to citizens to, obviously, reach out to all of you and try to make their case one way or the other. So no decision on that has to be made in that regard.
Are we, oh, just go ahead, Chris.
I was just, I was just thinking, you know, one of the reasons that it's obviously convenient to get tags elsewhere is that people don't have to deal with city hall hours, you know, for the community members. Is it feasible to consider having them at the community center, at the wellness center, when that opens, to provide another city location with hours that are more expansive?
Feasible, yes. Have we thought about it? No, but definitely feasible, because those hours would likely be till 10:00 at night.
Yeah. I just think we might consider that, because that has to be manned, the more expansive hours. It might, you know, provide less on those retailers.
Yeah, and if it's going to be staffed?
Yeah, just for, you know, for the thought.
Good idea.
But I like, I agree with you. I, I really do think we should encourage some recycling. I see where you're going with that. I just think that price point of $3.25 per day is considered.
Are we currently under, I just go from, are we currently under contract with WOFC, or we're kind of just?
Our contract extends day by day.
Okay, yeah.
And, you know, the onus was really back on Dave, because I had reached out on multiple occasions to get him to come.
I just didn't know if there was some drop date that we had to?
No.
Figure out.
No.
I mean, it'd be nice if, if we, I mean, we're going to have to make a change one way or the other. It'd be nice to, I don't know, first of the year, or some kind of nice, like?
Yeah, as far as, nobody would notice the difference. I mean, the extension of the contract probably needs to happen sooner rather than later, just because going dated, anybody could basically end it at that point. I'd like to at least get it under the existing contract.
Right.
We don't have to make any change as far as the dollar amounts until the first of the year, for sure. We don't have to make any change as far as the dollar amounts until the first of the year, for sure. Again, it's not as if the, the change would be dramatic that soon. It would be incremental, but you just could continue to take that loss month after month.
Sure, yep.
So, some of those will be on future agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, I like your suggestion to get it public.
But this would, like I said, my, my goal by getting this out there is allowing the public to, to state one way or the other how they would feel about the increase.
Any other questions? Next item, discussion, consideration of a contract amendment number one, OPN.
This was just over my spending capabilities at thirty-three eighty-five, but with the success of all of the fundraising, there are features, recognition features, and then some signage now that this building has a name. So, this is an extension of their contract, that this would be designed for that specific purpose.
They'll just want to make the required motion?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, I move to approve the contract amendment, and it would be proposed additional thirty-three eighty-five for design services.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one cares? Next item, discussion, consideration of geothermal ground heat exchange test at Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center.
So now that we have the agreement with the school and it's signed, the next item on our, the docket would be to drill a test well, conduct a conductivity test to make sure that the geothermal well system that they have used in this facility will do what it says it's going to do. Now, this, this specific test will not go unused, so they will actually put this as part of the overall well field once it's completed. So, it's not only the test site, but it will be one of, one of the actual wells.
Do we put this drilling to bid, or is that part of the, the contract limits? We have a successful contract?
The actual geothermal system will be put to bed with, put to bid with the rest of the project. This specifically, because it falls well underneath the quote, we just needed to get a quote.
That is your question, no?
Yeah, somebody like, what if, or like that?
They'll be able to build, to bid on the whole project itself.
No action needed on this one, Chris, or you need a motion?
We need a motion. It's fifteen thousand four hundred.
Actions have none on there, so.
What happens if the test doesn't work? What?
The test is important for, for two reasons. Ones, one, they would have to redesign the geothermal system based upon the test results. The second is it has an indirect correlation to the rebates that were received from the line of energy for energy efficiency, so it would put back to design engineers. It would be the sub working on it to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better system. The best thing that we can do is complete this test before we actually start construction process, so we know for sure we should operate the way that they're expecting it to.
And obviously, the fund is already budgeted, right?
Now, is this one, is this system that they budgeted, is it like low, the low end, the middle ground? I mean, if, obviously, if this doesn't come back, it needs to be re-engineered, which would boost the cost of the geothermal system.
Well, we can reevaluate the geothermal, so they, when they go through this with the white group, they go with three different systems. The system that we're talking about right now has approximately forty thousand dollars worth of rebates from a line of energy that come with it. So that number would change, although the system itself is more expensive with geothermal versus a true HVAC system that everyone has. So, we would have to, to evaluate at that point whether or not, you know, geothermal would continue to make fiscal sense to leave in the building. How much would our rebates from a line be affected? So there'd be a number of things, but that, like I said, we still have at least two months while this is at bid, if we need to make significant changes.
So it's a possibility that we could go to a conventional system, is what you're saying?
It's always a possibility, yes. It is a possibility, even when you receive the bids on October thirtieth, to make modifications based upon the, the bid documents, so.
Any questions on the resident team motion?
I move approval of the kind of committee test for the QC geothermal proposal from QC Geothermal Inc. for fifteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one cares? Next item, discussion, consideration of setting a public hearing for an ordinance amendment, chapter fifty-five twenty-one, livestock of the Montverden Mistle Code.
This'll start the ball moving and the conversation we've been having on the last three, series of three meetings, so just minor modifications to the chicken ordinance, actually.
I'm disappointed it's not really the chicken. Livestock makes it work.
I use the actual term.
In that case, I would move that we set the public hearing date for chapter fifty-five dash twenty-one livestock ordinance for the October first meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one cares? Next item, discussion, consideration, information, systems alert.
Alerts. Is that from Nixel? Yeah, that shouldn't have been removed.
That's more interesting. I have that looked interesting.
That actually is coming back, it's just, we're not quite there yet with it, so.
Okay.
At the next meeting, I'll be there.
All right, discussion, consideration of a random understanding with the chauffeurs, teamsters, and helpers, Public Union two thirty-eight, public services agreement.
So the current contract actually requires us to bring operator and administrative assistants in at the lowest level for a year. In the past, it's probably never been an issue, however, in today's age, with people being able to see more movement, staff would like, myself especially, would like the ability to bring them in at a level to measure with what their experience is. In this instance, we have an operator who will be coming from the city of DeWitt, bringing eight years of experience, multiple grades as it relates to water, and would have to take a four dollar an hour pay cut for an entire year in order to come here, which, in my conversations with the teamster representative, I thought was a little insane, so. So we've asked the, we met, Wolf Nick and I met with the employees, came up with this compromise, and so what you have in front of you is just a memorandum of understanding that would give us the ability to bring anybody in at various weight, or various wage levels depending on their, their work experience.
Think this is just a note right here?
Yeah.
Similar to what public schools do, where they give credit for years of service, hopefully it's on, something like that, so.
Taking the business of the realm.
Yeah, it was just, and, and in this instance, there wasn't anything specific that said we had to, except for in the table, it's list, the first twelve months will be at a certain level, so. They'll still be on probation, they'll just, won't have to take a pay cut to do it.
And I assume teamsters are fine with this?
Yeah, actually, teamsters delivered their signed copy today.
Okay.
I move that we agree to the memorandum of understanding between the city and the chauffeurs, teamsters, and helpers in number two thirty-eight, two thirty-nine, article seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one cares? Next item is reports. We have, are any of the audience for the school library annual director's report?
Yeah.
Kathy, we do have a copy of it there, so please share whatever you feel is.
Okay, well, first, from the library, this is all, and. So you're on, is that better? Well, we'd like to thank the city for their support, as always, to the public library. As you saw, that we've had three hundred and sixty-six public programs this past year. New programs that we've had are a pod club, where people can listen to pod clubs privately, and then they come together to discuss them like a, like a book discussion. We have attained tier three with the state, so we are still getting the maximum funding from the State Library of Iowa. And we found that instead, we've had a program called Cracker News, and that has not been as popular as something that is Wednesday workshops, which are more STEAM-based activities, and STEAM is for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And so we are continuing with those activities on Wednesdays and not doing the crafts this coming year, trying to kind of do what people would like to attend. We're still delivering to daycares, books, once a month, for those people that can't get to the library. And other than that, we are just continuing to have lots of great programming. This summer, we were busy every day with programming except Friday. Our dog, reading to dogs program has been very successful. We've been able to extend that, not just in the summer, but also in the fall. So we will be reading, the children will be reading to Wilson again, starting in October. We also have the Fall Community Book Talk coming up, we're hosting. It'll be at the library October twenty-fifth. So we're not resting on our laurels, we're still out there working hard for you. I just kind of like to come and give you a report, you don't ask for this, but I'd like you to know we're spending a lot of money.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thanks, girl, we do.
Any questions or any concerns?
Some of the situation correlates with the report that we got from President Brandt. We're now about, certainly, operating on the public library statistics, as to how much our community uses it, how many, active users, number of items checked out, versus what percent of the budget is, so, thank you.
You bet, happy to join.
Thank you.
Chief, you're up, sir, anything that you'd like to highlight for the council?
Nothing on the report, just a couple of updates for you guys. Friday, we were notified, Friday afternoon, I was driving back on vacation, received a phone call from the K nine camera trainer, who informed us that Steve and K nine Monster successfully completed their certification training on Friday. They were the only team of three teams there that were able to successfully get through it. So Steve was a little frazzled when I talked to him later, but a little excited as well, so.
Things are progressing, this is his final week of training down there, and then you'll, he'll be back, actually, working Saturday, probably with K nine Monster. The SUV.
So Monster will be on duty?
Monster will be on duty, Saturday.
Really?
Yeah.
Because I assume you guys will do some sort of meet and greet at some.
We are, yeah. We've actually got quite a few things planned, there's, we're doing a safety fair event at Cornell this, the end of September as well, so we're trying to get up there.
And on a, on a vaguely related note, the five-year anniversary of the dog park, you just come out there in September. It's awesome. Maybe tie it up.
Yes. So, a lot of things, we're gonna try and get him out into the school and get him introduced that way as well, as we can. The K nine vehicle is currently getting graphics put on it, so that he can use it Saturday when he gets back to work, and have a marked, marked patrol car from there, so that should be getting wrapped up this week with the design that we've presented, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
Any, any questions for Chief?
It's about the task. I don't know, that's a big deal.
So, so Steve, that was an option. It was, it was a pretty intense certification process, where they're, you have to do tracking and drug search, and then kind of have detection of the person, location of the person inside of a building, and then immediately on to the next thing, and immediately on to the next thing, so talking to him was pretty intense, so.
If you ever have a chance to meet the trainer, you'll understand just how big getting through the first time is. He means no words.
And he, and he doesn't cut corners, I mean, if Steve and the K nine were not performing to where he wants, you won't, as you've seen, there's one of the three teams got certified. The other ones will be working on it again this week, but he got through it, so. You guys will probably get to meet him next council meeting, so.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Disson, you're up, anything you want to share, highlight with the council?
Uh, nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions?
Nice memo for Eldon and Cruz.
Yeah.
All right, no questions, we'll move on. I see Matthew's not here, the Montverden Parks and Earth Report. Anybody have anything?
No, I can just, real quick for Matthew, I just wanted to let everybody know that everything was successful and they're on their way home, so.
On a less dramatic note, I, just if you would, I liked reading in his memo regarding Lisbon kids coming over to play in a camera, I think it was in the, the, play football. I believe they didn't have enough kids for a team, but were able to. So I just, I like, I want to encourage, and I appreciate that, combining the resources and opening up those doors, so.
I think that at all is a great, and that can be obviously made a lot of sense.
Yes. And I know we've done it in other instances, even back to when I was in Parks and Earth, but I just, I think that it's still on.
Anything else from anybody? Anything in terms of reports to share?
I do. Couple things, I'm attending the Iowa I D U S conference at the end of the week, so I'm excited about that, primarily what I'm going to be going to are the economic development-related sessions, so I will have a report on that after the next meeting. And also, in regard to the Montverden Lisbon Community Development Group, we had a really good meeting with Michael Weber from the State Main Street Program. He was very impressed with our program, and so impressed that they are encouraging us as a community to apply for the Great American Main Street Award in twenty twenty. So, it's a pretty big deal. And it's, it's nice that, you know, they've got another community pegged sort of for twenty nineteen, so this allows us a little bit of time to prepare for this and kind of line up priorities that C D G feels appropriate for, you know, lending itself to that. But obviously, if we were to receive that kind of condemnation at a national level, it would really need a, for additional marketing exposure for our communities. So, it's just exciting that we're on the list to be considered for something like that.
Actually, something we take to help our nomination.
And that's what, exactly, that is, that's what the C D G board now is starting, they're gonna actually have a subcommittee task group to work on this and to help prioritize. And I, and I know off the top of their heads, one of the things that came up was streetscape, and working toward that, you know, that point, getting that place. So, we'll, we'll see if there are more of that.
I'd say I would ask if they either join us for a council meeting or reach out with even.
Yep.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything? Chris?
Stephanie took my Main Street Iowa.
Oh, sorry. Surely, there's more than you had.
He was very complimentary of, of everybody in the city, the C D B, and Joe in general, so. It really was less of an interview and more about everything, we're doing well and continue on, so. It was an easy hour to give up, but just as a reminder, I will be out from Thursday, basically, to Thursday. So, if anything is needed, please see Sue, if it's an emergency. Otherwise, you can just reach out to the department head in charge of that specific. They'll keep you posted, one way or the other, so. And then, of course, the great companies, we're getting your health insurance renewed this month, and it sounds also wonderful.
Becoming the norm, maybe more? Large or small, a little better? Anybody have any?
Demolition ordinance and ordinance, noise ordinance is still, is that not basically else's court?
So, the demolition ordinance, Guy Booth was out of town this past week. His assistant told me that, hopefully, it will be this week. So I'm crossing my fingers. I have an old, old electronic version, and it would take me probably a few. I have an old, old electronic version and it would take me probably a few weeks to try and sit back through what we actually changed. So it's easiest if it comes to him. The second, um, as it relates, just kind of an update on where we're standing, uh, with the complaints that have been received. We do have a, basically a disturbing the peace noise requirement in, in city code. However, we have no tangible, uh, way to enforce that. So it's, it's very subjective.
This is in regard to the Catholic Church.
So today I talked to, um, our city attorney and, and agreed that changes would be made to be made to the noise portion of that ordinance. So we did in fact have something that we could actually enforce. Cause right now, um, I don't think it would hold up regardless of what side the city staff came down on, on this particular issue because there's no, so there's no tangible enforcement mechanism in, in the code right now. So, um, it's very subjective. Either Doug or I would have to, to rule on behalf of one of the enemies coming forward based upon who we believe more. So Bob did provide today a, the Cedar Rapids noise ordinance, and it does have decibel limits. Um, it's very, uh, well thought out. So I think what actually needs to happen is we'll have to bring something to the council for you to consider initially.
But at the same time, it also omits churches, correct?
Yes, I will say that Cedar Rapids specifically omits Carolans and, and bells.
There's one thing to consider because they're redoing the, the chapels out and I love hearing that. So I would, I would definitely be against saying you can't hear bells. So that's, it's, it's a sad thing.
Yeah, I think the reason that, you know, Bob and I talked about it today, unless, you know, not necessarily, this, this situation obviously brings some things to light, but, at the same time, any amount of noise, even if it were at a party, uh, right now, we don't have a mechanism to say what the decibel level is that constitutes a, a noise violation. So we do need to make some changes. That particular section of the code actually also has, um, a, a segment that's, Bob said it's not now unconstitutional as it relates to the flag as well. So the whole section.
We've got some work to do.
Yeah, the whole section needs to be updated as it is. Um, this will be an opportunity to have a discussion as it relates to noise and, uh, you know, kind of see where it goes from there.
So hopefully both sides can continue to work together, communicate professional man, work it out about us having to be the gold. But that would be ideal, but.
No pressure. That would be mine too.
No pressure, Tom.
I don't understand the basis of the complaint. And there, first of all, it said three. So we're, you're saying there are three different parties?
There are three complaints that I received.
Is it this time, timing?
I, I think timing, they're every day, when they, you know, if you read each complaint, they're slightly different, but it's time of day, the number per, per day. If you'd like, you can read the complaints. They're in my office. I'm kind of getting close to making this an agenda item, but, um, just to give everybody, the, the Catholic Church right now has stopped bringing both for the time being until they can get, uh, their contractor here to do some work with them. And in the meantime, that gives us an opportunity to kind of have conversations about, um, potential changes. But even so, we're, we're still, even if we fast track the ordinance change, it would still be a month and a half out before anything can be put on the books. So the hope is in the meantime that, you know, the two parties will come to a favorable stance. We'll see.
And anything else, Chris, anything else? Any other questions? So we can get Nick home to watch his bear lose. Put it on the record?
They got the defensive player that walks on water and jumps over tall buildings now. They, they can't lose. Oh wait, they did.
Yeah.
Two first round rounds. I don't care. I don't care. We. Though if you look at the bear's graphics, he is.
Oh, you mean they waste them?
Thanks.
Okay. They either get, they either get, or they get somebody that they can change.
Vikings finally got Jan Bailey, second most accurate kicker. 3.4. The Vikings have been screwed by kickers their entire franchise life. That's a guy to have. Ninety-one percent inside the dome.